That's what I heard. So, I guess he's gonna come shadow on like Thursday maybe? I don't know, one day this week. Yeah, so we were gonna, we're entering him at like, cause it's easy enough to enter him as a student.
Okay.
So, yeah, Stephanie's like.
Alright, we're gonna call the meeting to order. Hey, out there.
No.
Did it scare ya? Sorry. Alright, we're gonna call the meeting to order and our first part of our meeting is to go into closed meeting. And so, we're gonna have a motion and it's going to be, be it resolved, the Montgomery County Board of Supervisors of Montgomery County, Virginia hereby enters into closed meeting for the purpose of discussing the following. Section 2.2-3711, number one, discussion, consideration or interviews of prospective candidates for employment assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, discipline, or resignation of specific officers, appointees, or employees of any public body. And it will be Parks and Rec Commission. Do I have such a motion?
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call please. Ms. Bone?
Aye.
Mr. Kitsch?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Fritzjakowski?
Aye.
Ms. DeMott?
Aye.
Mr. Graffski?
Aye.
Chair Biggs?
Aye.
Seven ayes. We are now in closed meeting.
Okay, we're back from closed meetings, so I need a motion to come out of closed meeting.
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. Kits?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Fidzikowski?
Aye.
Ms. Demots?
Aye.
Mr. Grafsky?
Aye.
Ms. Spohn?
Aye.
Chair Biggs?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Okay, and then we're gonna have a motion to certify, whereas the Board of Supervisors of Montgomery County has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote, in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and whereas Section 2.2-3711 of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by the Board that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law, now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Supervisors of Montgomery County, Virginia hereby certifies that, to the best of each member's knowledge, one, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting to which this certification resolution applies; and two, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion conveying the meeting were heard, discussed, or considered by the Board. Do I have such a motion?
Motion.
Is there a second? Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Fidzikowski?
Aye.
Ms. Demots?
Aye.
Mr. Grafsky?
Aye.
Ms. Spohn?
Aye.
Mr. Kits?
Aye.
Chair Biggs?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Okay, and now it's time for our moment of silence and our pledge, and Ms. Hill will lead us.
Please rise for a moment of silence, and now I will lead us in the pledge. Let us pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so our first part of our meeting, we have presentations, recognitions, and awards, and we're gonna have three different presentations, and we're gonna start by welcoming Virginia Organizing, the NRV Chapter Whole Home Repair Program Initiative.
As they come up, I'll just remind you that we've heard from them at previous meetings. They came and spoke during public address, and I think they've met with some of you since then, but they wanted to come and present this to us all this evening, so welcome.
Thank you. My name is Jocelyn Hildebrand.
And I'm Brandy Faulkner.
And we're here to present on behalf of Virginia Organizing's New River Valley Chapter. So again, my name is Jocelyn Hildebrand. My pronouns are she/her's, and I live in Blacksburg. I'm here as a member of the New River Valley Chapter of Virginia Organizing. Virginia Organizing is a nonpartisan statewide grassroots organization that was founded in southwest Virginia, Lee County, in 1995. We are dedicated to empowering people in local communities to address issues that affect their quality of life. We especially encourage the participation of those who have traditionally had little or no voice in our society. We build relationships with individuals and groups throughout the state to get them to work together democratically for change. Now, the New River Valley Chapter is one of eighteen chapters across the state. Our chapter has primarily focused on education. We host an annual community forum. We have worked with Montgomery County schools to figure out how to reduce race, sex, and gender, and disability-related disparities. We were instrumental in implementing a memorandum of understanding between the police and schools to ensure that the police are not involved in discipline, as well as other measures that protect against the perpetuation of inequities. Other issues include transportation challenges in the New River Valley. We got buses running between Christiansburg and Blacksburg for essential workers during the pandemic, and environmental justice efforts across the state. We've hosted civic engagement workshops in Christiansburg, Blacksburg, and Pulaski. We have also supported various community partners, such as the Christiansburg Institute, and we are working on housing issues to support low-income residents in the NRV, which is what you'll hear about tonight. Now, our chapter started thinking about housing issues in the New River Valley several years ago. Through some informal conversations with our community, people have been talking about not having enough social service resources to get help with their rent. They also mentioned that, once they were lucky enough to actually find a place they could afford to rent, they usually had their rents raised and were priced out. Home ownership was definitely out of reach for most of the people we talked to. Now, at that time, a couple of years ago, most of the people we seemed to be talking to were from Pulaski County, but as we started to ask more questions, we discovered there were also plenty of folks in Montgomery County. We continued to have these very informal conversations for months before COVID made us pause. Since we resumed our work, we have looked at some housing data for the New River Valley, and also looked at state legislation that affects housing equality, housing quality. We've connected with other local organizations to talk about some concerns and to hear what they've been working on as well. We've visited mobile home parks and apartment complexes to listen to their concerns. Many of the folks are worried about evictions and told us that their landlords would just raise their rent with very little notice and expect them to pay it or leave. And while we are definitely worried about that, one of the most common complaints people have is that things simply don't work and need repair. It was the numerous complaints about the repairs that made us focus our work on that issue for now.
So, I have a very important question. How do I advance the slides?
If you pull the drawer out, there's a mouse.
Awesome. Okay. So I just wanna talk a little bit about some of the things that we have observed while we have been out talking to our community members. You can see on this slide here, these are some of the pictures from a few of the mobile home parks that we have visited that clearly show some rather disturbing need for repairs. And as we talked to people, a couple of things were pretty obvious to me. One is that people are angry and they are afraid. They're angry because they think that nobody cares about them and what they're experiencing. And I can't even count the number of times when tenants sort of looked at us quite strangely, and a few of them just flat-out asked us, "What are y'all doing here? Nobody comes out here to see about us. Why are you here?" And they're also angry because they're being asked to pay more and more in rent, and it's not being reflected in the quality of their housing. They're also afraid because they don't wanna get kicked out of their housing. They're afraid that if they speak up, if they talk about that hole that's in the floor, if they talk about the leaking roof, then their landlords are gonna ask them to leave, and they'll have no recourse. So they'd rather just keep quiet and protect the little bit that they have, and nobody should have to feel like that. So what kinds of repairs are we talking about? Rotted wood steps, broken windows, leaking pipes and drains, missing siding, broken heat pumps, holes in the floor that allow small animals to come and go as they please, roofs caving in, appliances that aren't working, poor insulation that's driving up winter electric bills, on average, $500 a month, and one tenant who showed us a bill, $900, consistent throughout the winter. So those are the kinds of things that we're dealing with, and just two quotes here from a couple of the people that we talked to. "My mom is old, and she can't even come over here. What if she falls down those steps? I don't know what I would do if something happened to my momma over here." "I'm barely making it," says another one. "I called, but you don't get no call back. They send you a letter raising up the rent. They won't fix nothing. I don't know what we're gonna do." And these are common. So what is it that we are asking for? We want the county to have a whole home repair program that grants money to low-income homeowners, renters, and landlords so that they can get the repairs that they need. Repairs that keep them in their homes and improve their quality of life. We'd like the people with decision-making authority, that's you, to work with us, to put together a working group so that we can figure out the details that would allow us to move forward. We want your support for some of the most vulnerable and disempowered people in our community. And I have a lot of faith that we can work together to meet the need of the people across the county. We focus on repairs. As Jocelyn mentioned, it's not that the other complaints that we were hearing aren't important. We have, in this area generally, a housing crisis, affordability. It's a big problem here. And yes, we're concerned about that, but when we think about the vastness of that problem, repairs gives us an opportunity to meet an immediate need so we can improve the quality of life for people right now, even as we work to some of the longer-term solutions. And it keeps people in their housing. It reduces the likelihood that they will become unhoused. So that's why we're focusing specifically for now on the repairs. So of course, there are some challenges here that we will have to work through. Funding being at the top of the list, we understand that sometimes it seems like there just isn't enough to go around. We don't know yet how much it will cost, because there are so many variables that we would have to think through and work through with the working group. But we think that truly there is some that can go around, especially for an issue that is this urgent. There are also some grant opportunities that we can explore. For example, HUD has a funding opportunity through the Price Grant. They put out a call, $235 million in grant funding for preserving and revitalizing manufactured housing and eligible manufactured housing communities. I would love to get my grubby paws on some of that, the people of our community desperately need it. So we know that we'll also need to get landlords' permission before any of the renters make any substantial repairs to the property, and we also know that, as Board of Supervisors, you have limited authority under Dillon's rule state, but those are challenges I think we can work through. So we can answer any questions that you have, or if that's something you would like to take up later, we'd be happy to do what we can to give you answers.
Okay, we'll go and see if there are questions of Board members. Supervisor Demots, would you like to start?
Sure. So as I told you guys, when I met with you, I'm absolutely happy to participate in a focus group or be in a working group to kinda help deal with some of these challenges. I think my perspective could be helpful, and I guess I'm just publicly restating my interest in working with you on that. I don't have any questions. I hear the reflection of some of the questions that I've already asked and the information you've given today. So clearly, I can see that you're thinking about it and working on it, and I'd be interested in continuing to meet with you.
We appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Supervisor Grafsky?
I don't know that I really have any questions at this. Part of this is, you know, the part of this that really bothers me, and it's nothing that you or any of these tenants are doing, but it's if landlords really aren't keeping these places up, and I understand where the tenants are coming from in fear of eviction or being, you know, kicked out, but like where is their ownership or culpability in this? And what, I don't know, what channels exist currently to force that hand a little bit more?
Yeah, and I think that's a fair question, and we've talked to some of the residents about that, and basically, they get stonewalled until they give up. It's just a matter of waiting them out, and that's not fair to tell a person who's already in a vulnerable position that, hey, it's kinda on you to maybe go sue your landlord with whose attorney and what money.
Right.
So certainly, there is room for accountability there for the landlords, but our concern is that, in the meantime, people are suffering, and we really need a way to help people. It's not that the other options are off the table, but it's a both-hand.
Yeah. One of the things that bothers me about all this is the potential that we're enabling bad behavior by, if we're making investments in these properties, or potentially making investments in properties and things like that, just because somebody's really good at ignoring the issues or the calls for help.
Yeah, and we've thought about some safeguards there as well, things like making sure that they can't kick the tenants out and hike up the rent after the repairs are done. So I think there are some ways to put in place some parameters and guidelines so that the focus remains on the people who need the help, even if, in some way, it ultimately also benefits the landlords. I think it's worth it for us to focus on the people who are asking for help.
Thank you. I admire the work that y'all are doing. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Okay, and Supervisor Spohn?
Is someone here from NRVCS that's gonna be presenting? Okay, you guys need to talk to them, because even though they're talking about a different program, I'm on their board, and I just heard last week that they potentially will receive a lot of money for housing in general, and they haven't defined, you know, how that will be distributed throughout our community. It's for the New River Valley, but that's one source of funding.
Is it through a grant?
I apologize. I just don't know the details, and they haven't received it yet, so... And if one or both of you send me an email, I can get you a contact there.
Perfect.
Because I don't think these guys are... Yeah, they're shaking their head. You know, I'm all for this. I'm glad that you're asking for participation, and Supervisor Demots is very interested in doing that. This is a long-time issue, and nobody's been able to figure it out, so hopefully, we'll make some strides. Thank you for your efforts.
Thank you.
Okay, Supervisor Kits?
So just to preface all this stuff, and, because my business has done business with their parent organization, so I have no say in anything like that. My own point on one of this is, off Supervisor Grafsky's point, I think it should go into enforcement as opposed to adding money to landlords. I think it's to force them to be accountable for the places that they provide, because you're right. We need to be able to make sure that proper housing is provided, but I think we do that through a little more zoning enforcement or building enforcement or codes like that, and that's not my wheelhouse, and wanna state that right there, but I think it's, it would be disingenuous to reward bad behavior, but we know that there's a strong need for that to happen and for other things. It's the enforcement part, especially we're talking, because a lot of that stuff, when I looked at it, those were mobile homes. Those were different parks around the area, and I've been through a couple of them, and I know exactly what you're talking about. I think it's an accountability issue. I think that's something that we could look into from there. Just not keen on the point of rewarding that type of consistent behavior before we follow through with the enforcement portion from there. But that's just my two cents on that one. That's all.
Okay. Supervisor King?
I have no questions. I believe I got them answered when I met with y'all, and I do appreciate everything you're doing. And like I said, you know, when we met, I know there's a lot of needy people out here, and if we work together, maybe we can solve it. Thank y'all.
I think so. Thank you.
And Vice Chair Fidzikowski?
Do you all have any idea of some of the trailer parks that you were in? How many were renters versus how many actually owned their trailers and were paying rent to stay there? Do you have an idea of that?
Yeah, so we didn't consistently ask that question, but we did ask it to some of them, and it seemed to us that there were some mobile home communities where the rate of homeownership was actually quite high, but they were renting the lots, and then some where there was next to no ownership. And maybe even more disturbing, there were also some people who had no idea whether they actually owned their homes or not, because they were receiving lots of notices, some of them to the effect of, "You do own the home, then you don't two months later." So some of the communication was quite confusing, but I don't know, overall, across all of the ones that we went to, exactly what that percentage is.
Have you all kind- Do you, have you all contacted any attorneys that would be willing to help out in some of those cases?
We have not directly asked anyone to take a case. But when we were doing our community forum last year, and we were in touch with Southwest Virginia Legal Aid, they shared with us that they have been working quite a bit on this issue. But like most public service agencies, they're understaffed. There just isn't enough of them to go around to really get to the core of the problem. So we've talked with them about it, but we feel that providing this type of assistance is also really, really important.
Reason I bring that up is because I'm sure some cases would require an attorney. Then there's others, especially if they don't own the property, if they don't own the house. There are certain documents you can get at the general district court level and file them. Now, Mr. McMahon, correct me if I'm wrong. If the judge orders them to fix something, they can't evict them. They got to fix it. So they would have to go through that process. It's not a difficult process. And I would think that even if, could they have an advocate help them with that without being an attorney? Would have to be.
They can't help them in court, they could help them before going into court. But yeah, they can't represent them in court unless you're the lawyer.
Yeah. So it might be good to get somebody from the organization that you contacted just to have an attorney meet with the group of people and explain to them, this is the document you got to get. If you bring in pictures, that's also very helpful. And just maybe walk them through it. Maybe a lot of them could get that without the fear of being evicted.
So that was the purpose of our community forum last year, when we did exactly that. We helped with the forums, we talked them through the process. Some of them have tried and failed. So it's not like they're just kind of sitting there. Some of them really have tried hard to get help with their problems, but they have not yet been successful.
Through the courts?
Through the courts and through working with their landlord directly. And they did not get the outcome that they needed.
Well, it's definitely a tough task that you're taking on, that's for sure. And I don't know where the answer is, but like Supervisor Kits said, it really, the whole thing about rewarding bad behavior on the part of the landlord is, that's a tough pill to swallow right there. But for the folks that, I know there's been a lot of organizations, a lot of church organizations, that usually once a year, they'll go out and do some repairs, roof repairs and porch repairs. I don't know if you've been able to contact any of them or any other nonprofits that may do something similar. But tough job. But thank you.
We agree.
Are there, did that cause anyone else to have a question? My comment, well, first of all, Jocelyn and Brandy and members of your group, thank you for reaching out to each of the supervisors and for being here tonight and really pointing out a critical problem. And whenever there's a housing issue, always look to Supervisor Demots, like, for, you know, her guidance, because she's been involved in housing for so long, and it's a passion for her. I'm interested in exploring, you know, more what we could do. I mean, like, everything races through my brain. I think, like I told you, like, do you have to have insurance? How is this going to work? Are you going to be a nonprofit? Are you going to set up, you know, yourself as this is going to be a nonprofit to do this? Like, all these things were going through my head. But one thing I want to make clear, like, to the folks that might be in the audience or watching, Marty, what is the county's responsibility, if there is a responsibility? Do we have a responsibility at all in any of this? As far as if landlords are not doing what they're supposed to be doing?
Well, in most instances, it's a private matter between the landlord and the tenant. There is a maintenance code under the building code. The county has not adopted the maintenance code. It's, but, you know, it comes with cost. And the maintenance code is in the two towns because of, you know, there's just more renting going on in those areas, more landlords. But the county, as of today, has never adopted the maintenance code.
So if we had a maintenance code, that would also involve having someone to enforce it, right?
Correct.
Which would add to, that's interesting, because as the population spreads out from the towns into the county, I mean, that's something I'd be interested in looking at at least. I don't know about anyone else, but I just wanted to clarify, you know, like, when people get frustrated like this, the folks that you guys are dealing with, you know, where do they go? What do they do? You know, and we're sort of just sitting here like, well, what, you know, we're sort of in the same boat you are. We want to do something, but we're not sure what. So Supervisor Demots?
The town of Blacksburg has a good rental inspection program. It's limited in scope. And so it's mainly dealing with houses and rental properties closer to the downtown area. The program came about because of landlords not properly maintaining their properties. And so I know that I meet with a person from the town every couple of years and walk them through units so they can conduct an inspection to make sure things are livable for my residents. So that's a good model. I'm interested in this maintenance code thing. I didn't, I was not aware of that part of our building code.
Correct. Blacksburg has the maintenance code, has Christiansburg, but yeah, Montgomery County does not.
And that's kind of where my practice area is more applicable. Is I'm familiar with, you know, if somebody has a problem in Blacksburg, they can call the Housing and Neighborhood Services and request an inspection. So there are some programs there that would be interesting to look at just to see how the town of Blacksburg is doing it. And then also to see how the town of Christiansburg is doing it and what type of enforcement arms there are.
Well, let's ask. Are the rest of the board members interested in that part of the equation right now? Because I heard a lot about not letting landlords get away with what they're getting away with. If in fact, they're doing that, are you interested in looking at a maintenance type thing ordinance? Okay, well, that's one thing we got done. Now, back to your group. What, do you sort of want us to, like, process all of this and still engage with you? And we've got someone that's already wanting to be a liaison, like, what else are you thinking you might need or, at this point?
Yes, we would love if you could all convene a working group so that we could work together with you to look at the details and continue moving forward on this so that we can craft a program that would work.
Okay, a working group. Okay, Supervisor Kits?
So I have a question for you.
Right now.
Is, was the majority of the problems in the larger groups more mobile homes? Was it more the trailer park style problems that you were having? Because like I said, all the pictures I saw, I think all of them were trailers in some way, shape or form.
Yeah, that's where we went the most. There were two apartment complexes that we also visited, and they had the same issues. So no, it's not just in the mobile homes.
I know, I know before, when I was knocking doors and things like that and talking to people, that they'd come up a couple of times for mobile homes. That there were certain things being done that the residents didn't appreciate, and there were things that they wanted to try to get done. And I know we've talked about it on some levels and some other things. So I'm just trying to think out loud on this one, because it does come down to enforcement. And I think a large part of it has been, previously and historically, more mobile homes. Because it's more people that are, it's more of a low rent possibility, and they can get more homes on a smaller piece of ground. So I just think it's something that we should really look into. Because I think, especially out in my area, I know there's a bunch, and I had a chance to walk them. And I actually recognize a couple of those, so.
Supervisor Byrne?
So I understand Blacksburg, and, you know, I understand Christiansburg has this maintenance code. But you can drive down Main Street and see unmoed lawns, patchwork, where, you know, the students have moved out. And is that part of the same code?
The maintenance code is dealing with structures, it's not lawns or, that's a whole nother type of ordinance, right?
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Anybody else? Well, thank you both for being here and for your group for being here tonight and for being a catalyst to get everyone thinking about this. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, our next group is Onward New River Valley with Katie Boswell, I believe. Welcome, Katie.
Hello, thank you all so much for having me here tonight. My name's Katie Boswell, and I'm the Executive Director of Onward NRV. For those who I have not gotten the chance to meet yet. So the goal for my presentation today is really to thank Montgomery County for your continued support of Onward NRV and to inform you about our organization's mission, our goals, and the work that we do. So who are we? We're a regional economic development organization that represents the entire New River Valley. We're a public-private nonprofit that was formed in nineteen ninety by Montgomery County as well as our four other localities in the New River Valley. We have over a hundred and twenty investing organizations, a thirty-one member Board of Directors, and four current staff members with one open office administrator position. We're one of seventeen of these types of organizations in the Commonwealth of Virginia and among hundreds in the US. And we work very closely with our state-level partners at the Virginia Economic Development Partnership as well as our local economic development organizations in all five of our localities. Our mission is to attract and retain world-class jobs, investment and talent in Virginia's New River Valley by marketing the region as a premier destination to live, work, and do business, and by building collaborative partnerships that support economic vitality. And so to create that collaborative partnership, we have a wide variety of investors. We have ten public sector investors. So the four counties, the city of Radford, as well as five towns within the New River Valley. We have the three higher education institutions in the New River Valley, Virginia Tech, Radford University, and New River Community College. And we have over a hundred and thirteen private sector businesses that invest in Onward, coming from some of the largest employers in the region to sole proprietorships that are part of the movement to grow that economic vitality. So we are working on a five-year economic development strategy for the region. You can see our four goals here in that strategy. And I'll briefly take you through each of those goals and then just give you a flavor of some of the initiatives that we have in each of those areas. So our first goal is to attract and retain talent to support regional growth. When we got feedback from our stakeholders about this five-year strategy that began in July of two thousand and twenty-three, their feedback really told us that talent attraction and retention needed to be our number one focus for the organization. So some of the ways we do this, our NRV Experience Program is a talent retention program where we work to retain college interns that are doing summer internships in the New River Valley with companies. So the companies enroll their students as sort of an add-on program. And what we do is we provide those students networking opportunities, professional development lessons, and also excursions where we highlight each one of our communities through different activities. And this is about to start in just about two weeks for our fifth cohort of this program. And this year in Montgomery County, they're going to be doing a volunteer opportunity in collaboration with the Community Foundation of the NRV as well as doing bowling and fun arcade activities at the NRV Super Bowl. So we're really excited about that. Another talent retention strategy that we did and released a few years ago, hopefully you have seen this, driving around Blacksburg and Christiansburg. This is our New River Valley bus that is designed to attract Virginia Tech students as well as alumni and visitors to the Blacksburg and Christiansburg area, highlighting, excuse me, that you can find your community. And also, the other side highlights finding your career in the New River Valley, and it takes folks to our website. So next time you see this, you'll know that Onward was the organization that made this happen. We also promote endorand careers through exhibiting at career fairs. We don't promote our organization, but we do promote Virginia's New River Valley and the jobs that we have available here. We direct students to our job board, and we have handouts about our targeted industries, which I'll go into in a minute. But really, highlighting those career opportunities for students to stay in the region after they graduate from our colleges. We also host a job board on our website that any job posted in the New River Valley populates to that job board. And then we fund marketing dollars through Google Ads and social media promotions to direct traffic to that job board. We've had over forty-three thousand visits to that job board since it launched in two thousand and twenty. And then another really exciting talent retention initiatives that we have on our website is a cost of living calculator, where folks can go plug in what they make in their current location, and then they can compare it to the New River Valley, and it will tell them what they would have to make here to make an equivalent cost of living. So, or an equivalent living, excuse me. So that some really striking ones, Washington DC, San Francisco, you know, it's less than half that you have to make here to have an equivalent lifestyle. And so that's really impactful. And employers will often use that in promotion to try to get, when they're trying to recruit folks to come live in the region. We also attract and grow businesses to stimulate new jobs and investment here in the region. We work very closely with our local economic development offices here. And we focus on these four targeted industries. So you can see I've highlighted here some Montgomery County businesses in each of those industries. But we have advanced manufacturing, information technology, food processing and agribusiness, and Uncrewed Systems. The reason why we've chosen to focus on those is research has shown that they are, we have an existing cluster here in the region. So that means that we already have businesses well-established here, and they're high-growth opportunities for our employees and for our businesses here to continue to grow those clusters. So when we are focusing on those clusters, things that we're doing to support them is business attraction activities. That includes lead generation as well as supporting prospect visits when we have companies that are looking to locate here. We also do existing business activities. We host twice-a-year summits for leaders in the manufacturing and tech and IT industries. You can see this photo on the screen here. It's from a recent one that was hosted at In Motion in Blacksburg. So those get leaders from across the industry in the region together, talking about problems and challenges and how they can solve them, and then seeing great examples from one another. And then finally, down at the bottom, and we focus on supporting our local economic development offices in developing sites and buildings in the region and helping to advertise those sites and buildings for when a company's looking to expand or a company's looking to move into the region. We did this and have highlighted all of our localities through site videos. And I brought today one of our site videos from the Falling Branch Corporate Park Phase Two, before it was split into two lots. This was released in two thousand and twenty-one, and so I thought I would share it with you. And you can kind of see what our work shows. That project was originally started as in the height of the pandemic because site consultants weren't able to visit localities when they were looking. But that has become crucial even now because what we continue to see and hear is that those consultants and the companies that are looking do 90% of their research, and I'm throwing that number out, that might not be accurate, but a large majority of their research before they even get in touch with you. And so videos like this and the information we have on our website can be really impactful when companies are trying to look for places to locate. So. And the third goal is to market the New River Valley as a competitive destination for talent and companies. This logo is on the bus, so when you see it, you will see this logo. Hopefully, you have seen Supervisor Demonts touting this logo as well since she's on our board. But this is our regional brand that we promote along with our tagline of a natural fit. The New River Valley is a natural fit for talent and companies. And then we've had some great success with marketing the region digitally. You can see here over the past five years, so that these results are from 2018 to 2023. We've had 555 published blog posts about the New River Valley on our website, 384,000 website visits, 506,000 engagements on our social media channels. So that could be a like, a comment, a share, a click, things like that. And then we've amassed 18,000 followers on our on our social pages combined. We have our website, which I've mentioned several times, to market the New River Valley. We have plenty more videos beyond that site videos. So if you haven't checked this out on YouTube, I hope that you will. We have a new video releasing in the next couple of weeks, so I'll be excited to share that with the greater region. And then we have brochures and marketing materials that we have printed about our communities as well as about our industries. Many of these have won Excellence in Economic Development Awards from the International Economic Development Council. And then finally, our fourth goal is to strengthen the connectedness of the region. We host regular meetings for our local economic development offices. You can see Brian Hamilton right there in the in the foreground. And then that happens every other month where we bring our Lidos together, and this year we hosted for the first time a joint meeting of our Lidos and our DMOs, our tourism directors, and this photo is from that meeting where Randy Cohen was presenting on the results of the study about the cultural and economic impact of the arts. And then finally, we were part and continue to be part of the consortium promoting the Virginia's AM Squared Tech Hub, which won a Strategy Development Grant from the U.S. Economic Development Administration. The New River Valley Regional Commission is the lead applicant on that grant, as well as Virginia Tech and Montgomery County and all of our localities, as well as the city of Danville and many other private sector businesses in the region. So. And just to conclude, I'd like to thank you all for the sincere thanks for your continued and increasing support of Onward New River Valley over the years and the investments that Montgomery County and the 120 other-plus investors in our organization make our work possible. So thank you. Chair Biggs, I think I need to leave you the question, so sorry.
Okay, let's see if we have any questions. And again, I'm gonna start with Supervisor Demonts since she serves on your board.
Sure.
Do you have any questions? I know you have a good comment.
I don't have any questions because I am very familiar with the work of Onward NRV and very supportive. I do serve on the Board of Directors, the Executive Board, and I'm the current treasurer for Onward NRV, so I am very supportive of this organization and the work that they do in the community. Katie, that was a really excellent presentation. Thank you so much. I look forward to hearing my colleagues' questions. I don't have any questions for you, but I really, really appreciate you being here and bringing the great work that you're doing and your team is doing to the Board of Supervisors. So thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, and Supervisor Grasky?
I'll echo a lot of Supervisor Demonts' comments there, you know, very impressed with the work that Onward has has done and continues to do. I guess this is this is a question that I kind of have for any economic development group is, you know, with with my perception is there's a bit of fragmentation in that space, and so like, what are you all doing to make sure that you're you're complementing each other and and not focusing all on one thing and, you know, potentially missing out on other opportunities, things like that? But, you know, what is the collaboration like between the different economic development agencies here regionally?
That's a great question. I think that the first step is the open lines of communication between all of our organizations, and I think that our region does that particularly well, and folks say that a lot, but I do think that that is true. And I think for us in particular, it really helps that with our strategic plan, we have very defined goals. And so when we're looking at how to complement others and how to not overstep, we look at is this work fitting into one of these four goals? And can we contribute to that? Or is that the work better suited for one of the other organizations that may have different goals? And then working when those intersect?
Thank you.
Sure.
Okay, Supervisor Byrne?
Hey, so I had to look up what Uncrewed meant. Other than wing, who else does that here?
That's a great question, and I should have defined that more. So for us, in our definition, it includes both our drone vehicles and also autonomous trucking and vehicles. So Torque Robotics, even though they were highlighted in the information technology because they do a lot of software development, they are also in that space. And then we have companies in all all different areas. So there's a local chapter of AUVSI, which is the Association for Uncrewed Vehicle Systems International, that has grown up here in the region, and that includes companies like Cowden Technologies, Moog, Cole Morgan. So a lot of these companies maybe aren't making the drones necessarily, but they're making the important components and pieces that contribute to that. So we have a really great sector. And then, of course, we also have Virginia Tech's research at both the Mid-Atlantic Aviation Partnership, as well as at the Virginia Tech Transportation Institute. And so both of those academic focuses are really great contributors to that industry as well.
Awesome. And then I have one other question, and it relates to the fact that, I believe, we upped our contributions. And part of part of why we did it, maybe a small part, was to encourage other local governments to to up their parts. Did anybody follow?
So that's a great question. This year, we did a request a per capita increase for the four locality, excuse me, the five localities, the four counties and the city. That was 5%. And so we requested a 5% increase from the towns that also contribute. I know some of those towns are still going through the budget process. I did receive a letter from the town of Blacksburg that they approved that increase as well. I have not yet heard from some of the other towns.
Was that after our budget? Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. Supervisor Kids?
No, I wasn't familiar with the organization. I'm on a Regional Economic Development Commission, so I've had I've got a crash course in it, so I've seen all the stuff that y'all do and and at each meeting. And it's just amazing how, like Supervisor Grasky said, how many small pieces of the pie there are, and to be able to wrap your hands around it and to be able to point and go, hey, you need to go in this direction, you need to go in this direction. I think it's very good for the area, and I'm very supportive of what you're doing. So thank you.
Thank you. That's I appreciate that. And and one big thing that we do in that fourth goal is kind of being that connector piece. So if folks don't know where to go or where to fit, we're happy to help them with those pieces, too. So thank you.
Okay, and Supervisor King?
I have no questions, but I do appreciate everybody working together to make it a better community for everybody. Thank you.
Thank you.
Vice Chair Fitchakowski?
Yeah, I don't really have any questions because I follow you all pretty good, I think. Try to stay involved with what you're doing, plus my previous time with the Regional Commission helped me out. And I think you're absolutely right. Your strong point is communication, and I think that's very important because if you can keep all of us engaged and all of us thinking about where we need to go, then I think that helps out a lot. So thank you for your presentation. Always good that you visit with us, maybe once a year, and just give us an update. Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't have any questions. I I'm very supportive of what you do, and I think you're a great ambassador for for coming out, and and you're 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 excited about it, and it shows. And good luck with everything.
Thank you. Thank you all very much.
Thank you. Okay, now our next group is from New River Valley Community Services, and they're gonna talk to us about Behavioral Health Co-Response Program.
Yes, we asked Patrick Halpern to come and give a presentation to you this evening to tell you kind of where we are in the process. I think all of you are somewhat familiar with the Marcus Alert program, but he has some more details and share partners here as well if there are any questions that might involve him, and then we can talk at the end about how this might go forward into the future. Thank you.
Welcome, Patrick. Enjoy.
Thank you. We really appreciate the invitation. Again, my name is Patrick Halpern. I am the CIT Coordinator for New River Valley Community Services, and in that capacity, I work with and train area law enforcement in there in our shared response to people experiencing behavioral health emergencies.
And my name is Joey Thacker. I am the Co-Response Coordinator and Law Enforcement Liaison for New River Valley Community Services, and I will be coordinating Marcus Alert Co-Response, and I also will be working with the Sheriff's Office with any of the issues we might have with that.
So we appreciate you all giving us a bit of your time this evening to bring you up to speed with the Commonwealth of Virginia's adoption of the Marcus Alert system and let you all know how we plan to implement that here in Montgomery County. So first, want to kind of bring you up to speed with with the code requirements. The the piece of legislation that was passed is called the Marcus Alert Awareness, Response, and Community Understanding Services Alert System, and it was named after Marcus David Peters. This is a gentleman that was fatally shot by Richmond Police Department. It was deemed justifiable by two Commonwealth attorneys, and is generally recognized that what we are developing here across the Commonwealth wouldn't necessarily have saved that young man's life that day. What it does represent, though, is a collaborative approach that involves two secretaries within the Commonwealth of Virginia. I cited the two code sections there. Thirty-seven point two is the chapter that relates to the Department of Bay Area Health's responsibilities, and Chapter 9.1 refers to the Department of Criminal Justice's responsibilities. The original legislation passed in Special Session of 2020, and it was amended in the next session to only require localities that had a population greater than 40,000 to implement. So obviously, that is Montgomery County, the town of Blacksburg. The town of Christiansburg is going to participate voluntarily because they recognize the importance of this. And then obviously, institutions of higher education have to implement, so Virginia Tech will be working with us as well. So really, the goal of this system is to provide a comprehensive, systems-wise approach to reducing the Commonwealth of Virginia's reliance on law enforcement for behavioral health emergencies by creating a behavioral health response to these emergencies. Excuse me. So this involves diverting calls for service from our NRV 911 Center to a behavioral health regional crisis call center, and we'll kind of step through what all of that involves, developing a statewide mobile crisis resource, and then us developing a specialized response, which is what we will talk about in terms of behavioral health co-response. So in terms of system development, I wanted to real quickly give you an overview of what the Commonwealth's requirements are and then what we as a locality have to do, and then we'll actually step into the details of our local plan. So the Commonwealth developed a statewide stakeholder group, and they actually developed the implementation plan and policies, and it involves stakeholders from around the Commonwealth. The state is also responsible for what's called a four-level triage framework, and this is what is used by the 911 Centers to actually screen calls and determine what call can be transferred to a behavioral health call service and what should be a law enforcement response. The state is responsible for developing and staffing the mobile crisis teams, and this is the actual behavioral health workforce that they are looking to rely on for responding to low-level calls for service. NRVCS actually is the regional manager for the 988 Regional Call Center, which is actually located in Johnson City, Tennessee, interestingly enough, because Frontier Health in eastern Tennessee has actually been doing this type of service for over 30 years. And so we wanted to go with an organization that had some competence and history behind them, and they've shown a lot of success, and so that's why we're working with them. The state is also responsible for statewide training centers and to do all the marketing around this service. We're trying to change public understanding. If you call our clinic historically, you would hear a message that said, if this is a behavioral health emergency, go straight to your emergency department or call 911, and we actually want to change that. And so there's going to be statewide marketing around that. In terms of our local components that we're responsible for implementing, one is a voluntary database. This is already in place. It's managed by NRV 911, and this allows for individuals that have a mental health diagnosis or caretakers, guardians, parents, to voluntarily provide some information to the 911 Dispatch Center because whether it's from law enforcement perspective or behavioral health, we want to have as much information as possible when we're responding to a private residence about someone's situation or their history. And so that allows people to voluntarily provide that information and just makes for a safer response for everyone. The second component is obviously what we are here to talk about, and that is our specialized response option, which we will be using co-response, where we actually put a NRVCS clinician into a law enforcement patrol vehicle, and they will go and ride together and respond to calls for service and provide exemplary service. There are three protocols that are required of this. The first is the call diversion component. This is already in place at NRV 911. There was a code requirement for this to be in place last July 1st, so we are compliant with that. The second protocol is part of an MOA that just says local law enforcement will respond to mobile crisis if we need their assistance. That kind of seems unnecessary because anytime we call local law enforcement, when we need their assistance, they arrive. We don't really need an agreement for that, but that the state thought that was necessary. And then the third protocol is around having specialized response protocols. Essentially, this is merely relating to training requirements and policies for our law enforcement partners, and I'm happy to say that Montgomery County has satisfied all of this.
So what I'm going to talk about is what this is going to look like for Montgomery County, and we're going to go over the the call triage framework. And before we do that, I just want to point out the acronym PSAP is dispatch, so NRV 911. So a level-one call, someone would call NRV 911, and this is a distress caller. No active homicidal thoughts, possibly some suicidal thoughts, but no plan, no means, kind of a lower-level call that could require up to 72-hour services. So we'll go into kind of how we're going to respond to that here in a minute, but that is our level-one. Level-two calls are distress callers. Again, no homicidal thoughts or ideations, suicidal thoughts and ideations, still no plan or a loose plan, but no means, maybe some minor self-injurious behavior. A level-three call would be active aggression, florid psychosis or active psychosis, possible homicidal thoughts, still no plan, no means, someone who may be actively cutting or has suicidal thoughts, maybe with with the means, and maybe a plan, but they just haven't gone forward with those plans or those means. Level-four is kind of the emergent response. This is something where someone has either made an attempt at suicide or is maybe actively assaulting others, or maybe there's a gun present in the house or firearm present in the house. That would be what we would consider an emergent level-four call. So how we're going to respond to that? If we do get a level-one call, which again is a lower-level call, the dispatch center will do what's called a warm handoff to 988. So if we get that call, the dispatcher will determine that this is a level-one call. They'll they'll transfer them to 988, and they'll make sure that it goes from a person to a person where they're never really placed on hold. So the person isn't having to restate their issues over and over and over again. It's 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 a little more welcoming. A level-two call for service, this is where your mobile A level-two call for service, this is where your mobile crisis will come into play. Again, it's considered a lower-level call, but it's something where maybe they needed to be seen and helped that day. A level-three call, that again will go through 988 into the call hub. Level-three call, this is where kind of, this is where co-response will sort of live, so to speak. This is something where the dispatcher will get the call. They will dispatch either, they will dispatch the co-response unit, which again will consist of a police officer and a clinician riding together. And then if that isn't available, the next step down from that, they would dispatch a CIT-trained officer. And we'll go over that here in one minute. A level-four call, again, this is an emergent, so they're not going to necessarily hold this call just for the co-responder. They're going to give it to the closest officer. And then the co-response will act as backup and respond. And once everything is taken care of, then we can bring the clinician in and maybe come up with a good course of action from there. So our co-response teams, they kind of bring together the clinical aspect from NRVCS and the safety and security aspect from the Sheriff's Office or the two towns. And this will be a full-time ride-along model, so the officer will, that will be their full-time job is answering these calls for service. And they'll have a full-time partner where their only job is to be the clinician for these calls of service. We did create four multi-jurisdictional co-response teams. There will be one from Montgomery County Sheriff's Office, one from each of the towns, and one from Virginia Tech Police Department. We already have the shared jurisdictional agreements between all the departments, so they'll answer calls countywide for the three departments for Blacksburg, Christiansburg, and Montgomery County. And Virginia Tech will pretty much concentrate their calls for service at the university, and then they will be available for calls within Blacksburg, the greater Blacksburg area. And if need be, if they have to go into the county, that is an option as well.
So our plan would be to create a staffing schedule among the three agencies responding throughout the county such that we would have ten to twelve hours of coverage seven days a week. And so that is kind of the plan. I did want to address the Board of Supervisors about the budget and the responsibilities of the county in both FY '25, starting in July 1st, and then FY '26 in the previous, excuse me, in the subsequent year. At the Sheriff's Office, they have done what they have needed to do in terms of meeting requirements of the state around training and policies. The state is providing each community that implements this program $600,000 per year. As you can imagine, that does not cover the cost of this program. We were successfully able to ask for an additional $300,000 from the Commonwealth. And with that, we bought the four participating law enforcement agencies an additional patrol vehicle for this sole function as well as the equipment for that patrol vehicle. So Montgomery County is getting at no cost to you all a completely outfitted patrol vehicle for the Sheriff's Office co-response team. And we have this year's salary paid for for a yet-to-be-identified co-response deputy at the Montgomery County Sheriff's Office. So for this upcoming fiscal year, beginning July 1st, there is no cost to the county or the Sheriff's Office to implement this program. Beginning in FY '26, what we intend to do is take the $600,000 that we get from the state and look at every partner's costs. So NRVCS's cost for this program is going to be more because we have four clinicians that will work with the four agencies. So understandably, we are going to have a larger share of that $600,000 just by virtue of having a higher personnel cost. But our full intention is to distribute the money among the law enforcement partners in a way that is equitable to all based on their costs and percentage of the cost to operate the program. So for FY '26, there is going to be a new line item for the county to consider for this new co-response deputy. And then maintaining the vehicle costs for this new vehicle that's been provided. We have the funding to pay for the vehicle costs, fuel and maintenance for this first year of operation. But beyond that, I'm not confident that we'll be able to get that money from the state. So that is kind of where we are in terms of your all's responsibilities. I recognize I've probably, we've probably gone over our fifteen minutes, so there may be questions. And if there is interest, I could tell you a little bit about the Crisis Center and the good stuff we're doing there with the money that you all provided to help us support the build-out there. But I recognize I've gone over my time.
Okay, let's see what questions we might have. And I'd like to start this time with Supervisor King. Do you have any questions, or do you want to hear any further information?
No, I don't have no question, but I would like to get more information on it. I mean, it sounds good.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, and Supervisor Kids?
So you said there's going to be a 988 Center. It's going to be in Johnson City. You said Tennessee?
There is one, and it is operating, and it is in Johnson City, Tennessee, correct?
So private entity, because I know nobody's altruistic in this and doing it for that, so...
It's operated by the public health provider in eastern Tennessee called Frontier Health.
Okay. What's the regional capacity of that, and who else is, because I'm just trying to figure out, because it's not going to be, and especially for our area, but it's still going to, calls are going to come in. But it's not going to, shouldn't be a daily, it should be like trickle here, there, just being able to respond in time. But what's the regional capacity of that, and what are we looking at as far as timelines? Because you're talking about a handoff back and forth?
So the Regional Crisis Call Center located in Johnson City, Tennessee, in addition to serving eastern Tennessee, will serve all of Region Three of Virginia. And that region stretches from Roanoke down to the tip of Virginia and all the way across to Southside. We are an enormous region. The call center volume, I wish I had come with the statistics for you, but I do not have them for you on the tip of my tongue at the moment. They are staffed to be able to ensure there is very few instances where a call goes unreceived.
Something if they're regional, they're going to handle us, but they're also going to handle Tennessee. And if they're of that capacity, then you're going to go up into Kentucky, because we're talking about the tip of Tennessee. You're talking about, you know, possible North Carolina. I'm just worried that, and I understand that you're limited in the resources that you have and where we have to go with this. But to kind of, you know, look at the whole picture here, how it's going to, it could be stressed to the point of, trying to think of the best way to word this one, but the ability for that program to be stressed at that point and not be able to handle the call volume, depending on the areas, the amount of universities in that area, I'm just trying to think, you know, larger. It's the worst-case scenario. It's the joys of being married. My wife's in the back of my head. And it's just like, what's the worst that could happen? So, you know, I'm just, and I know you, this is the, we're getting into this, and I know it's a great program, and I know it's the way we need to go. I'm just trying to look at this as, you know, what are we at? And that's the only thing that worries me is capacity.
So our Regional Crisis Call Center is actually part of a national suicide prevention lifeline, which has been remarketed as 988. So the way 988 functions, it is actually based on the area code of your cell phone. So if you had an area code of 703, despite being located here in Christiansburg, Virginia, your phone call would go to a call center in northern Virginia. So the, without getting too technical here, that call, if they recognize that you were in Christiansburg, Virginia, and you actually needed to receive services in Christiansburg, Virginia, they would automatically transfer your call to our call center in Johnson City, Tennessee. If a phone call does not get answered because of call volume and lack of capacity, it immediately rolls over to another crisis call center, the nearest one. The nearest one to us would be in Richmond, Virginia. And then if it rolled over again, it would go to the Hampton Roads, Virginia Regional Call Center. So there is always a backup for a call to be received and then re-diverted back to the community where it should get routed. The call center is actually not my area of expertise, but it's a very good question.
To joys of having a wife that's a social worker. It's all in the back of my head. So, okay, that's all I have right now. Thank you.
Okay. Supervisor Byrne?
I can answer that question, because the board meeting last week, so before this was implemented, the average number of calls per month, maybe, was 600. Since, it's 1,300. And we're also backup of the other regions, too. But everything's working fine. So, everything is working fine. It's not ideal because of the capacity increase. And I think it was because of the marketing of 988 all of a sudden, right?
Remember, I said hope's not, hope should never be a plan in consideration is a four-letter word?
Well, I asked the question, "Has any person not been served?" And the answer was no. So that was really great. So I don't know if that answers, you know, at least some of your questions. You mentioned that ten to twelve hours of coverage per day, per week?
Per day.
Okay. And how many years has the state guaranteed the $600,000? You might not know the answer.
To the extent they guarantee any ongoing funding.
Right. And then can you apply for the additional $300,000 again next year, and the year after, and the year after? Or is that a one-time fluke?
Sheriff Parton can attest to our willingness to always try to find money to make the programs we operate succeed. It doesn't mean we always are able to get all the money we want.
And I'm assuming that this whole program assumes, or I guess the 988 is what kind of splits whether something's behavioral, mental issue versus purely a law enforcement issue. Like for level-three or lower or whatever, right?
That determination is made by NRV 911. So the way a call would come in that would get transferred is, and they're going to get lots of training. They're going to use decision trees in terms of fielding these calls and deciphering, does this stay here with 911, or do we transfer it? But if a call were to come in and a call taker at NRV 911 determines that it should be transferred, then they transfer the call to 988. They actually stay on the line to ensure that the call has been picked up. Callers do have the right to refuse a call diversion, and they could say, "Actually, I would like a law enforcement officer to show up at my residence," or a co-response team.
Thank you. Great job.
Supervisor Grasky?
Do you have an estimate on the annual cost of those co-responding deputies per FTE?
When we have the personnel in place, I'll be able to give you that. One of the three agencies has completed their promotion process, and the two towns and the counties are in the middle of it. We are all prepared to get staff onboard by July 1. We really only have to have one team operational by July 1 to be compliant with the code. We have two of our four clinical responders hired, so we're all doing the best we can. But I don't have the true cost yet, just because we don't have all the personnel hired yet.
Gotcha. Okay. And I am just talking kind of like ballpark salary benefits for...
I think our law enforcement partners are looking for officers and deputies with about two to three years' experience. So on top of that, to incentivize folks to do this work, because this may be hard to believe, but not every law enforcement officer wants to respond to every mental health call in Montgomery County as their duty. So we're going to provide a 15% salary supplement to incentivize folks that have the competencies and the patience to do this work. So I think we are looking probably, at the end of the day, without considering benefits, we're probably based on someone's experience looking at somewhere in the neighborhood of $70,000 to $90,000. If you, you know, if a department hires, wants to promote someone that's been with the department for seven to 10 years, you're already looking at a pretty significant salary, and then put 15% on top of that.
In our benefit package, we just estimate about 40%.
Thank you. That's all.
Okay. Supervisor Demonts?
I have two different questions, and the second one might be more appropriate for our sheriff to answer. I wanted to talk about the voluntary, he came up to the front. I wanted to... Always watching him. I wanted to talk first about the voluntary database. I think that might be more appropriate for you guys. You said that's already in place at the 911 Center, and then, so if somebody was diagnosed or had a family member or a child that was diagnosed with a mental health condition that might affect their behavior in a crisis, then that person can either play... Can you just kind of touch a little bit more on how that works?
Essentially, they would call the non-emergency number at NRV 911 and indicate their desire to provide information for the voluntary database for Marcus Alert. So folks can provide as much or as little information as they like. A basic physical description, physical residence is kind of the minimal information people provide. But people can give information about diagnoses. They can give information about things that are helpful when they're in a crisis, things that are not helpful when they're in a crisis. Because again, the more information we have about someone's situation going into it, the more prepared we're going to feel and be prepared, whether that's law enforcement or behavioral health.
Okay. And then on that same note, that information, I'm sure because some of it is medical at times, is very well private.
It is, it very well states in code that this is still protected information. It is still confidential, and under no circumstances can that information be used by NRV 911 personnel for anything other than its intended use and purpose.
Great. And people have to submit it. It's not something that if I'm a 911 operator, I can create a file on a person.
Exactly.
Nice. Okay. So we've solved all my questions about that. You mentioned in your presentation that at certain points, there might be a CIT intervention or crisis intervention team through our law enforcement officer or agency. So I'd like Sheriff Parton, if you could, just address the CIT team. You have one currently, I'm assuming. Or how does that kind of play a role in it?
So, good evening, everyone. Through the CSP and our partners, Blacksburg and Christiansburg and Tech, Patrick can correct me if I'm wrong, but we are probably way up in numbers statewide as far as CIT-trained officers. I know at the Sheriff's Office, we're probably at 90%, and we have been forever.
That's amazing, because I understand that that's pretty extensive training.
It is. It is. But we have been involved in that for a very long time.
Since its inception.
Yeah, fifteen, twenty years? Twenty years. So CIT has always been very big. And Blacksburg and Christiansburg, same way.
Fantastic. I didn't expect you to have such a large number of your deputies that have also undergone the training, so that is amazing. Thank you.
We've been doing that for a long time. We've been leading, leading the way.
Yeah. Yeah, that's, I'm glad to hear that that's prioritized by you and by your agency. Thank you. That's all that I had. I appreciate the presentation.
Okay. Vice Sheriff Fidzikowski?
Do you all know what the average number of calls is for Montgomery County, including the towns and tech?
I can pull it up for you. Just give me one second. I have it right here.
I can tell you that over half of New River Valley Community Services' emergency custody orders. So this is a law enforcement or initiated or magistrate issued emergency custody order that brings someone into law enforcement officer's custody because they are experiencing a mental health crisis. And over half of the volume of what our agency deals with comes from Montgomery County in terms of total calls for service.
So this is just calls for service that were delegated as emotionally distressed persons. So this doesn't count your check well-being calls and things like that. Because that would be, you'd have a really hard time wrangling that number. But in Montgomery County, from May 1st to August 31st of 2023, the total number of calls were 78. There were 31 emergency custody orders and 25 temporary detention orders. And that's just the calls that Sheriff Parton's agency responded to. I have all the other ones for Christiansburg, Blacksburg and Tech if you would like to have those as well.
And that's actually maybe a little low because the way calls are coded through NRV 911, they sometimes don't capture the whole universe of behavioral health calls for service. Something could get called as a suspicious person or some... Something could be dispatched as a suspicious person and it turns out that it's actually a mental health issue. So there's lots of calls of service that don't actually get recorded through NRV 911 as behavioral health calls. But on a monthly basis, I would say at least, at least, at a minimum, Montgomery County responds to 30 mental health calls for service.
Actually, I think it's probably double that, but...
Probably is.
The, I guess what concerns me is that there's only going to be one team out for 10 hours a day?
That's correct. And the way the code is written is that if we don't have a co-response team in place or on shift, then a CIT-trained officer can respond to those calls. There's not any community in the Commonwealth of Virginia that is able to stand up a 24/7 co-response program because of the staffing costs.
Yeah.
So we're, like every other community in the Commonwealth, we're doing as much as we can with the very little that we are getting from the state.
Well, I know that the, from what I've heard from folks at the sheriff's office, that they're pretty glad to have a trained specialist with them to kind of take that heat and maybe find an alternative to what they would have to do. So this probably doesn't affect the fact that if somebody is going to be committed, that you all would take that spot and the deputy would be released to go do something else?
Yeah, so if the co-response...
Would the whole team stay there with them?
So if the co-response team determines that someone needs to be brought into custody for a further evaluation, perhaps they do need to be psychiatrically hospitalized. The responding co-response officer and clinician will either take them to the emergency room or preferably to our CIT Assessment Center in Radford, where they can transfer custody to the Radford City Sheriff's Office and then go to the next behavioral health call for service. We actually talked about this in our most recent meeting. And originally, we were thinking, I was thinking, I'll be honest, that the co-response team would not manage that initial custody. And as we talked through it, we realized that there are issues related to, you know, how that individual being taken in custody would feel just being passed around like a hot potato rather than, you know, they just spent 20 or 30 minutes with this team who's worked to de-escalate them and provide them hope. And now they're going to say, see you later, good luck. Well, maybe it's a better form of care to deliver them to the emergency department or to the CIT Assessment Center. And once we get that person settled, then we can get, if it's a Montgomery County sheriff's deputy that's needed to maintain custody, have them come over to the emergency department and resume custody. And then the team can go on to the next call is how we determine that we would manage that. But we want to use them to the fullest extent possible, going from call to call and figuring out what's the best way forward. Sheriff's Parton's deputies do amazing jobs de-escalating people, keeping people safe. But really, you know, when you have a clinician with them on scene, it just opens up so many possibilities for a different clinical outcome.
Right.
Right? And so we're really excited about that. And, you know, I think we're going to see a lot more use of our Crisis Center. That's going to be our number one stop is getting people over there, hopefully promoting a voluntary disposition and connecting people to services. And then downstream, keeping people connected to services. So hopefully preventing their crisis from reaching that point where they need to get a law enforcement officer to help them resolve their situation.
Well, I don't know if anybody... I would love to hear more about the Crisis Assessment location there in Radford, but I don't know if we have time for that, if that would...
Sure.
One minute. Let me just say this. We routinely, from year to year, transfer 50% of the New River Valley's ECO volume. And so that is eight hours minimally where Sheriff Parton's deputies can return to Montgomery County and keep our community safe and not be hanging out with someone for an unplanned medical visit. And so we think that's a good use of our funds and a good use of everyone's time. At the Crisis Center, you know, CIT Assessment site is for folks that are involuntary. They don't want to talk to someone about going to a hospital. And what we want at the Crisis Center is for people that are willing to talk to one of our providers to help them figure the crisis out and get them connected to services. So the volume we're seeing there, you know, as you all certainly recognize, you and the four other localities in the New River Valley provided significant ARPA funding to help us build out a Radford Center to house the Crisis Center. So in our first year of operation, which was the fiscal year '22, we only saw 150 people in that first year. In the second year of operation, ending in June 30, 2023, we saw 513. And in just a half of a fiscal year this year, we saw 818 people. And we're on track to exceed 1,700 people in this full fiscal year of FY '24. So the volume is expanding. And we're able to, you know, immediately onboard medications, get people talking to other individuals with lived experience. And we're seeing very little people leave the Crisis Center not connected to a resource and remaining engaged in that resource. So this is the site that we are wanting to steer public education towards. We want you to come to the Crisis Center as kind of urgent mental health care and not go into the local emergency department because that is not the appropriate place for our community members to go when they're in a behavioral health crisis. And we could not have done this without your all's support. So we are very grateful and thank you.
So all you need is a lot more money and a lot more people?
I think that could be a fair statement for not just public behavioral health, but public safety as well.
Amen to that. Thank you.
Did that bring up any other questions? Well, my comment is, I can imagine that the training is just immense because the responsibility is so great in making those decisions. And so I want to commend New River Valley Community Services and then Sheriff Parton and all the police departments. The CIT, the way I remember it, started here with the Victoria Huber Cochran was very instrumental in getting that program going years and years and years ago. And our law enforcement brought into it. And then other folks came forward to find out what we were doing. Is that not correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah.
To my recollection, like I say, that was a long time ago.
Yes, years ago.
But I know we were onboard early and fully with the numbers, so.
Yeah, I remember when it started, unfortunately. Fortunately, that should be right.
New River Valley CIT was the first program in the Commonwealth of Virginia.
Yeah.
Accurate. We did our first training in September of 2004. So we're coming up on our 20th anniversary here in the fall.
Well, I just think it's something we should be very, very proud of that that came from here. And just observation-wise, not knowing particulars, I would say that it has served our law enforcement very well in certain situations that we've read about and we've seen on the news. So thank you all for all you do on behalf of the board.
Thank you.
Okay. Okey-dokey. That, oh, you want a break? Okay. I guess we'll take a 10-minute break and then we'll start back with a public address. So we'll be back at 5:00. So, we'll be back at 5:00 of. Okay, dokey. We're, we're back in session now. Okay? And we're going to start with public address. And no one signed up before the meeting, but I'm sure there are people that would like to speak, so I'll just read our guidelines so everybody's familiar with them. You address all comments to the chair and the board from the speaker's podium at the front of the room. And it's our time to listen to your concerns. The board does not reply to questions during this time. You come up, you state your name and where you reside when you come up to the podium. You have four minutes to speak. At the end of three minutes, you'll see the yellow light go on on the little box there. And then, at the end of four minutes, a red light will come on, and that means that your time is up. Speakers may leave any written statements and/or information for the board with the board clerk. And speakers will be judged out of order should they engage in personal attacks, use profanity or abusive language, or debate with the audience. During public address, we ask the audience to please be respectful of the speaker's time by not applauding, commenting, or interrupting. So, at this time, if there's anyone that would like to come up and address us, I see Mr. Beard is ready. Come on up. Welcome.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. My name is Bob Beard. I live here in Christiansburg. Two weeks ago, I got up here and spoke, and I was really, really excited, and I, you know, I have a tendency of speaking really fast, so my apologies. There's three things I'd like to speak about tonight. First is regarding the school budget. You know, there's probably about a quarter of a million dollars that were, was allocated to be spent that's not going to be spent the way that it was allocated. I understand that Dr. Andy Whitaker is no longer with MCPS, and they're not going to replace that position. That's close to $200,000. And Dr. Brigham is not going to take the pay raise, so there's another, you know, 15, I can't remember the exact number, but a great deal. All right, so, you know, and a month ago, one of the school board, I mean, one board supervisor just mentioned that the cause of inflation was due to price gouging. And I started to talk about that, and that's where I got really excited, and, you know, price gouging basically is a reflection of monopolistic conditions set by big government. So, when you have big government allowing everything being produced in China, so you have slave labor, and you have no, you know, you don't have any competition here in the States, well, then that's how you have your price gouging. And I'd love to know some companies who are price gouging, so we can boycott them. I know Tyson Foods, who has probably one of the largest food manufacturers, or poultry production facilities, closed their plant in Iowa so they could build a whole new facility in upstate New York and hire illegal immigrants. Okay? That's a fraction of the cost. So, cheap, cheap labor, but they'll have no monopoly, so their prices are going to come down due to, due to that, but they still get to go and use illegal immigrants and so forth. So, I would love to take a course with you over tech or over NRV on Econ 101, and we can do, take the class together and see, you know, what's changed in econ, if I'm right or if I'm wrong, in a general, general thought process. My last part is tax gouging, okay? You guys raised our, our cost of living in here's increased 4.5%. You guys got $6 million new money this year, 5.9, to be exact, I guess, and those 6 million due to the tax increase, okay? That's 4.5% cost of living increase to live in Montgomery County, okay? That's a price increase to live here in this county. Okay, now, is it worth it or not worth it? Only, only notice is to leave. My, I got my escrow, my escrow bill from my mortgage company, and mine went up 60 bucks. It didn't go up 18 dollars. It went up 60 dollars. So, there's, you know, that's, and I don't have, my home's not worth $400,000 or more, okay? It's less than that. So, you know, but mine went up 60 bucks, all due to inflation and all the tax increases and all that stuff. So, I consider that tax gouging. You guys got $12 million of new revenue, you got $6 million of new revenue, and another taxes for another $6 million. That's tax gouging. You guys are, you're taking the money from us, from the general consumer, from the citizens of this county, and using it and spending it, making the government bigger. You guys hire, give more money to employees, hire new, new government workers. That's, when we look at the job growth, that's where those, all those new jobs are, because we had 50,000 new government jobs, and that's where the job growth is coming from. So, guys, you know, please think about what you guys are doing, and I said I'd be more happy to take that course with you, and, and we'll see who does, has a better score. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Beard. Would anyone else like to come up and address the board? Okay. Seeing no others, then we'll close public address. And Ms. Hill, is there any addendum that we have tonight?
No, no addendum.
Okey dokey. So, that leads us into work session. We're going to be discussing the Elston paid firefighters. Do I have a motion to go into work session?
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Fidzikowski?
Aye.
Mr. Motts?
Aye.
Mr. Grafsky?
Aye.
Ms. Spoh?
Aye.
Mr. Kits?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Chair Biggs?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Welcome, Mr. Lawrence.
So, Chris is going to present this for us this evening, and then, I think it's on the desktop. I think the presentation is. And then, Chief Ebel from the Elston Volunteer Fire Department is here, and Michael Geary as well, if we have any other questions.
Okay.
Great. Good evening, Board. Thank you very much. As the deputy county administrator, one of my service areas is fire EMS, which is relatively new. So, Michael and I have been working together quite a bit over the last several weeks to get me up to speed. So, what we wanted to provide tonight is an update to the board about implementing paid fire service in the Elston kind of service area. I'm going to provide a brief summary of the need and the proposal. We're going to include details on the staffing model, some peer community comparisons to other fire EMS agencies, focus on how we intend to work with volunteer crew in Elston to respond to calls together, and then also answer any remaining questions you may have. Our primary goal tonight is to kind of confirm a consensus from the board to proceed with advertising for 12 new positions that are part of the budget, because that's going to take several months to hire them, and that, so it takes a lot of time. So, in terms of the need, we review call volumes, call details, call times, monthly, looking at, you know, quarterly trends, monthly trends, and earlier this year, you know, in the wintertime, we were seeing trends in the Elston station. The data was showing increased response time, but more specifically during daytime hours, not in the evening, not necessarily on the weekends. And discussion with our department leadership, our county staff, our volunteer chief, Ebel, Supervisor Fidzikowski, really focused on just identifying, what are the issues? What do we think's going on? And how do we ensure service delivery expectations to the citizens in eastern Montgomery County? So, one thing just to highlight, and I won't touch on the details necessarily here, but this is just an average for the entire 24-hour period. So, you know, as, as they're a little quicker in the evening, they're a little slower during the daytime hours, but it averages out. We were just seeing a trend of it getting longer. So, in this case, for time periods, you know, we're adding four or five more minutes, which in a call that takes 20-plus minutes to get to, that has implications. So, one of the things, too, to recognize that just, you know, talking with our volunteers is, you know, they work, too, so they have to respond to a call from their work. Some of them may not work in the Elston area, so by the time they get to the station, get their gear, get their equipment, and leave, and then respond to a call. It, it does take time. It's a large geographic area. It's one of the more rugged areas of the county, so it naturally takes a little longer. Discussion with Chief Ebel, really, we worked to evaluate options to improve delivery service, which resulted in the proposal that you have seen through the budget process. As part of this, too, in the proposal, the staff, paid staff, would be implemented to cover 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., but seven days a week, not just during the weekdays. And then, the volunteers primarily would cover 7:00 p.m., the evening hours. And then, certainly, as we've worked through, there are opportunities certainly for the volunteers to run during the day with the paid career staff. So, we did a lot of work. I say we, Michael did most of all the work, and his staff, really looking at comparisons. We wanted to just make sure we knew what the best practices were, what our peer communities were. So, there's a, a list of localities, you know, some of them are very close to us, some are smaller, some are larger counties, Radford City. All of them provide similar services with career, paid staff, and volunteers. So, they have a co-response, trying to make sure that that service levels blended together. And then, we looked at Renoke County, some Renoke City, they, they're a little different just being a larger city. We also look at NFPA guidelines, which is the National Fire Protection Association. That gives us kind of the, a good, you know, the baseline of what you should do and how you should do it. VACOR, which is our insurance provider, we asked them for advice, and their primary advice was follow NFPA standards or guidelines. And they have guidelines for volunteer as well as paid career staff. So, we use those to make sure we're recommending the right proposal. What we found, looking at our nine peer communities, was a general consistency of having a paid staff that has a captain, a lieutenant, and then firefighters. That consistency allows for supervision, for a command, you know, command and control of a, of a scene of your crew. And one of our assessments with eastern Montgomery service area is also to recommend having two trucks. They're a little bit of an island. It's a little more distance to get to. They have to be independent on the initial response to a call. The volunteers deal with this very well, all the time. They have to have enough people to effectively keep them safe, and then do the task at hand, and whether it's a fire or a car wreck or something like anyone. Our staffing would provide two trucks. One's the primary engine, so you have a captain with three other people on the truck, and then you have a lieutenant that would run a second truck. That truck could be a tanker, because there's not a lot of public water with hydrants out there, or whatever the, the needs may arise, whether it's a squad type of, you know, car wreck response or other, you know, forest fire, whatever the need is, that second staff, which is two people, a lieutenant and a firefighter. And then, we would have some part-time folks just to fill in the gaps as needed. Another key thing, as the department's growing, and again, we're adding 12, as proposed, 12 full-time people. Training is essential for this line of work. It's essential to keep them safe. It's essential to provide the services we need. So, we have a training position that's recommended as well at the senior level, and they'll provide both on the fire and the EMS side. Where, for compliance with federal and state standards, there's a lot of laws, regulations, policies, significant training. You have to document everything, and that's just on the career side. The advantage, one of the opportunities we do see is this position also can provide training programs to our volunteers, not just in Elston, but all the volunteers in the county with all the agencies. And then, help, you know, keep track of records and document that. We have a training center. That person will be able to program and help run those at the fire training center. And then, the other opportunity with the volunteers is they'll have to offer training and go meet them where they are. So, not during the day, during the evenings, during the weekends, and make sure training programs are organized around schedules that work for the volunteers. The org chart really is just, you know, a way to see kind of how things are organized. The things that are highlighted in yellow are the new part. The deputy chief of fire and emergency services is not new. That just highlights that that's a whole new set of staff that would report to that position that's an existing position. But A-shift and B-shift would have each captain, each would have a lieutenant, and then you'd have four firefighter paramedics or EMTs underneath that, and then the chief of training as well, so that you can just see. The other ones are all of our EMS. We have four shifts of EMS. They have captains, and then paramedics and EMTs, so you can just kind of see how that looks. And then, all that falls underneath Michael as the fire and EMS director. So, one of the key things, and I say in a combined fire department of career and volunteers, requires significant amount of communication and intentional planning to support both the paid and the volunteers as they work together. We do know, and as we have researched and worked and talked to our peer communities, that volunteers can run calls with paid staff. That was a big question. That was important. We think it's a good idea. They have to know how to work together. They're going to be living in the same station. They have to learn how to communicate and work together. That takes time. That doesn't happen overnight, so they need to train together. They need to learn together, and as much as possible, we'll, we'll facilitate that. And that'll be the expectation, you know, I know that Michael will have for his staff is, and certainly for the, the folks that we hire that are new. There are some key considerations. Training is important. You know, you're relying on somebody else with your life. We want to make sure you know what you're doing. So, we do have expectations that volunteers have firefighter one and hazmat. That's normal. That's what they do. That's how they become a member of the fire department, and they can get to that. But they don't have to have significant, super-high levels of training. They need those basic ones to be able to really work and go on calls. There are others, drivers, engineers, pump operators. There are other things that they have training for that, if they have it, our staff will deploy them on a scene as they're trained, as they're experienced, and as they can. And if they're not, then we'll kind of hold them back a little bit until they are ready for that. And that'll be something that Chief Ebel and our chiefs will work on to make sure they're all comfortable with that. During the day, if we have a call, our career staff will be the primary response team to that. They're responsible for managing, managing the call, managing the incident. If we have volunteers that are available and they do show up, it's that incident command. It's the command on scene. They will, you know, they'll be given tasks and, and directed what to do. At nighttime, our career staff won't be there, so the volunteers, you know, will have that complete control, and at any instance, that command on scene is what they do already. So, I don't think, I don't feel like we'll have a, should have any real significant problems when it comes to volunteers working with our career staff. They all know that they have, they have a reporting structure. That's, that's kind of normal. Nobody's out running, excuse me, running around by themselves. So, those hopefully are answering some of the key questions you have. We have, of course, Michael's here, Chief Ebel's here. We're happy to answer any specific questions that you have. Ultimately, what we're looking for this evening is a consensus of, you know, it's in the budget. It's a service we're ready to start to provide, and if the board is, you know, has a consensus, we can start advertising, because it will take some time to hire 12 new people, get them trained, then get them from being trained to working together as a team, and then working together as a team, working with our volunteers in Elston, all as one big group. So, any questions for myself?
Okay.
Or for Michael?
First, I'll call in Vice Chair Fidzikowski. Do you want to add anything to what they said before we do questions, or?
No, I don't think I have anything to add, but I'm definitely in favor of moving forward with it.
Okay. All right. Let's go to Supervisor King. I've looked to you for firefighting. Yeah.
Yeah.
No doubt Ellison says they need help during the day, and we need to provide it. I have talked to other localities, as y'all have. I just have a question on, well, to be honest with you, I got a problem with it. A captain and a lieutenant. What's the purpose of that?
One thing we talked about is, there's one per shift, one of each per shift, there's not a substitute kind of policy in place, that part-time people can fill in other gaps, but they wouldn't fill in that leadership gap. So if one of those positions had to be off for any reason, the other one could fill in, also the deputy chief could fill in, in that case. But I personally spoke with some county administrators from other places that do follow this model as well.
Okay.
It is a little, it is a little different on the EMS side. If a captain is not working for whatever reason, Michael will backfill, Brandon, they will backfill that captain, so there's always a captain working, because that's the reporting structure for running two EMS crews. On the fire side, if for some reason the captain's out, which will happen for training, sick, you know, vacation, the lieutenant will run and be kind of the lead, you know, command staff person. And it's just our professional opinion of how that structure is, you know, with that many people and running two separate vehicles, that you have a captain and a lieutenant structure. That's our recommendation.
On EMS side now, you have a captain dinner during the day, right?
Yes.
So we're gonna have three bosses?
No, so the way-
Full workers.
The way that we plan for it to work is that the EMS captains would have the same amount of responsibility that they currently have, they would just be responsible for our EMS providers. On the fire side, the captain and lieutenant would be responsible for only the firefighters that are under them. It will be a little bit different, being that the captain and lieutenant are at the station with the EMS providers, but that chain of command still follows the way that it's set now.
Can you turn, put the slide up for the org chart again?
Yep. So there won't also necessarily be two captains at the station. There won't be two captains at the station, like an EMS captain and a fire captain. The fire captain will be responsible for the fire shift. On the EMS side-
Chris, can you get a little closer?
I can get a little closer. On the EMS side, you know, with an ambulance, you know, serving that area, the captain that monitors, supervises them is either here, you know, in the office, they may be in Reiner, they may be over there, but they're not, they don't, they're not sitting out there as they're assigned.
So you don't have one stationed in Ellison?
No, just an ambulance with two, with two staff on the ambulance.
Okay. Can we talk about the salary of these people?
So I'll just say, our salary, based on these, are positioned first in our grade system, where they're, they fit with knowledge, skills, ability, education, training, and then we regrade them to where we think it's comparable, A, to the job at hand, but also the equity within our organization. And then also look at the market of where, what does it cost to hire somebody like that? And then how does that compare with our neighbors, so we can competitively hire and retain those employees? So there's not a specific number, but those staff will fit in the grade that, you know, we would assign where they fall, and then we would recruit within those hiring policies.
And we had input with the grade from the human resources director too. The numbers might have changed a little bit since I first provided those for you, but they're trying to solidify those and make sure they're right. I can provide those to the board in the morning and let you know what we landed on. I think they might be a little bit lower than we get initially presented to you, the actual pay rates. But a primary component really is where it falls in our structure, and making sure that those people are compensated at levels that fit within the organization. And then we did look, as Chris said, outside of what other people are paying as well.
Did you also take in consideration what these other agencies, how many calls they are running a year?
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
The last I seen, the captain was around $94,000 a year?
That, I believe that included all the benefits too, right? That was their salary and benefits?
Oh, I guess 94,000.
Yeah.
It did include their benefits.
That, that sounds like a loaded number versus salary and then benefits. So salary is what they really see in their paycheck, the benefits, of course, all add up to a total, but not that.
I mean, I think, and I'm not being mean to anybody, but this should have been brought out tonight, if you want us to move forward with it.
To bring what out?
Salaries, and where it's going. I mean, you know, I know y'all said you looked at Roanoke County.
That was one of the nine, yes.
Do you know what Roanoke County's operation budget is for firing EMS?
Very different than ours.
Twenty-two point eight million plus.
And we're not proposing to pay our people anywhere close to what Roanoke County or city pays. We did look at a very close neighbor, at a, I think it's a deputy position, and it's right in line with what we're proposing.
You know, and we talked about this before, I just, I have concern over that, because we've got people that's in law enforcement, that's been there for years, it's not making that kind of money.
I can speak to that. It is less, they are less, our captains in this structure are several grades less than the captains in the sheriff's office, because they don't have the same responsibilities. The number that we provided to you before definitely included benefits, it wasn't just their pay. But that was one of our prime considerations, they have to be compensated in a way that is not going to cause any problem within the organization, it can't be in conflict with the sheriff's office. That, that definitely is very key.
Okay, if you give me them numbers tomorrow, I'd appreciate it.
Yes, I'll send them to the entire board.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, Supervisor Kids?
So I've been going through this with y'all the whole time, I just think the biggest thing I want to bring forward is, training is integral, it has to be done, everybody needs to be on the same sheet music, and the analogy I used was active duty and National Guard, they all go through the initial same training. So when we deployed, we all were lockstep, pretty much, there'd be a little up here and there, but I think it's important, and the overall is, hour is everyone. It's volunteer, it's career, so when we say hour, we're talking about the overall general organization as a whole, is fire and EMS, and I make sure that the guys know that we've got their back on this stuff, and we've got their back on the training, and we've got their back as we move forward. I think that's, that's an imperative thing that we have to have moving forward. Chief, I'm coming out there, I need you to tell him when I'm coming, okay? So I'm coming out to talk, because the biggest thing we want, is we want the volunteers to know that they, we do have their back, that we're gonna come out and listen, and then me and Michael are gonna come out there during their scheduled times, and we'll try to meet them as best we can on their schedule, so they can talk, they can have input, and they can know that somebody's listening. So that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. All right, Supervisor Bowen?
Thank you for this presentation. I support it also. I'm not criticizing Supervisor King at all with your question about the salary. We approved the budget, which includes all the salaries that we expected to have to pay, so the money is there. I understand that we want to know the more details, but hopefully that won't hold up a consensus moving forward. I have no questions, thank you very much.
Okay, Supervisor Gravsky?
I don't have any questions, but, but thank you for providing the extra information and packaging this all up for us, thank you.
Okay, Supervisor Demots?
I have a couple of questions. Firefighter one and hazmat, how often are those courses offered, and who pays for those courses?
So currently, within Montgomery County, most of the courses are being offered by the Blacksburg Volunteer Fire Department. They do a really good job putting on trainings each year, so generally speaking, they'll have kind of two cycles of training, where they'll do firefighter one, hazmat operations, and firefighter two. Because they have college students and a lot of them to put through training, they try and do it right around the same time that semesters are happening. But with this training position, we'd like to be able to offer more frequent classes that, that meet the needs of the departments outside of Blacksburg. That way, they don't necessarily have to travel for training, and it's provided in their backyard.
Who pays for it?
So the training-
And more, are the volunteers responsible for paying for it, or is it paid for on their behalf? I guess it's more of the question.
So it depends on, on the training structure, there are two different options when it comes to training through the Virginia Department of Fire Programs. You can do a funded class, which is, Virginia Department of Fire Programs picks up the bill, and the only thing that the volunteer department or we will be responsible for are the books, or any of the course materials associated with it. Now, in a non-funded class, you would have to pay the cost to the instructors to come in and teach, but we would like to always do funded classes to help offset that cost, but it's not always possible if you want to offer classes as frequently as we do.
But in the proposal that we have, the training officer would provide that to the volunteers for no charge?
That's correct.
Okay. And currently, the volunteers don't have to, like, the actual volunteer themselves does not have to pay for their training?
No, no. We're fortunate here that anytime there's training, the volunteer departments will pick up the bill, so that individuals aren't paying for it out of their pockets.
And then, do we have any existing employees in our career EMS department that also have fire certification?
We do, I can't tell you the most recent number, but the last I looked was a few months ago, we had seventeen.
Okay, wow, that was a big number. So is there a role for any of those, I know we have part-time EMS people, is there a role for any of those folks in part-time fire as well, since they've already started their training?
Yeah, they very well could be. In all honesty, it depends on the interest level within our department and the employees we currently have. Some of our folks really just want to do EMS, that's what they're passionate about, they enjoy the patient care aspect of things. Some folks we have are really interested in the fireside. They're really two different jobs, and they get overlapped just about anywhere you look, because the responsibilities can be the same, but it just depends on, on level of interest, but I'd love to hire some of the folks that we already have to do this, but it just depends.
If somebody that's already an employee on the EMS side receives fire training, is there any type of benefit compensation, extra money to them for doing that?
Not currently. The, the way that we proposed this was it was just to fill the need in Ellison, because we knew it was a need that existed and needed to be filled. With our current staff that either have the training or want to do the training, ideally, we'd like to get to a point where we can offer that to them, but we're not there right now.
Okay. And that, that might be a question to keep in your head for the future, if they're certified, dual certified, I don't know how you would refer to it in the fire and EMS world, but should there be additional compensation for that, because they're more flexible on scene? And then, back to Supervisor King's questions, and I just want to clarify, Ms. Hill, you said we aren't planning on paying close to what Roanoke County and city pays, were we talking about leadership roles, or were we talking about, like the-
It's throughout the scale, right? It's, is it at all levels?
Yeah, for just Roanoke County, they pay more at all levels than, than we would.
Does that worry you? It worries me, as an employer, that we are going to spend a lot of time and effort and money, training, gearing, you know, getting everybody ready to be a firefighter, just for them to be recruited away by the next highest-paying agency.
I am very hopeful, you know, we won't know for sure until pen meets paper and we see the applications come in, but I know that here within the county, we have a lot of folks that are interested, that would do great in these roles, and, you know, a lot of them volunteer within the county right now, and we'd love to have them, because they know how the system works, they could integrate more seamlessly. I think we'll be competitive, but it, it just depends on what we see when, when the jobs are posted.
Yeah, and I know we don't, a lot of churn is, is bad for the department, I would think, and so anything that we can do on the planning side to eliminate future churn, you know, one thing that's gonna cause people to leave is more money. You know, why do you leave a good job? Because there's a better paying one. And so if we can avoid that, or at least position ourselves, whether it be through benefits, we have an excellent post-retirement healthcare program, other benefits, but just kind of thinking through, I would hate to structure the pay at the outset, so we're spending all this time and money training, just to lose people after a year or two. I, I think that that would be a huge miss for us. Roanoke County and Roanoke City, I'm sure, would love it, but I think that that would be a huge miss for us. And then, one final question, and I think the answer to this is no, but I'm just asking for clarification. Employers are not required to allow, I'm talking like, if somebody's working for MOOG, MOOG is not required to allow a volunteer to leave, to, okay, I didn't think so, but I just want a clarification, that's all that I had. Thank you very much. I think, overall, I am extremely supportive, with just a few concerns that I voiced, but thank you very much for the work that you're doing on this.
Did that bring to mind any other questions? Uh-huh, go ahead Supervisor King.
Are they gonna be eligible for, I guess you call it LEOs, hazard pay too, for supplement?
Yes, they will be, and our current EMS employees are as well.
Okay. I thought there was, I just want to make sure.
Anything else? All right, I don't have any questions or comments, I, I want us to move forward, because you've heard me say this fifty million times, it's all about the citizens that we serve and the response time that we give to them when they're in a crisis, so I'm, I'm ready to move ahead, but we need to look towards other board members, is there consensus? We don't have to vote, but is there consensus for staff to move ahead? Okay.
Thank you.
There you go, there's your direction. And thank you for all the work that you have put into this, and for the presentation, and, and all the information that you've had to gather, appreciate it. All right.
And for all of that, that's Michael and his staff.
You're just a presenter. Important to have a presenter.
I just want you to know, he used the word "hope," remember what we said.
Michael knows I've asked him what his Plan B and C and D are.
Okay, all right, then we can get on with your, surveying your districts, Vice Chair Fidzikowski. All right, so is there a motion to come out of work session?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please. Ms. Demots?
Aye.
Mr. Gravsky?
Aye.
Ms. Bowen?
Aye.
Mr. Kits?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Fidzikowski?
Aye.
Chair Biggs?
Aye.
Seven ayes. All right, next we have our items of consent, and they're listed there, and I think we did have one question that came from a supervisor, and that was in relation to the NRV Home Consortium Membership Participation Agreement renewal. And Supervisor Gravsky, I think you got your answer, but that was an important question that you raised, so do you want to, to speak to it, or Ms. Hill can speak to it, either one?
Either way, that's fine.
Yeah, it was a good question.
Supervisor Gravsky asked about the cost for the county to participate in the NRV Home Consortium, and that program is funded entirely with federal dollars, so it, there's no cost to the county for that.
Right, so when you went through the paperwork there, that was listed with it, that's why there was no cost involved.
I make a motion.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All right, roll call, please. Any further discussion? All right, roll call. Mr. Gravsky?
Aye.
Ms. Bowen?
Aye.
Mr. Kits?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Fidzikowski?
Aye.
Ms. Demots?
Aye.
Chair Biggs?
Aye.
Seven ayes. All right, that leaves us to new business, and our first item here is the advertised proposed ordinance amending chapter six, and this is to allow, six dash thirty-eight to allow installation of video monitoring system on school buses passing a stop-school bus. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I have a question.
Wow, it's awfully aggressive.
Um, how do we, I guess this might be going too far because we don't have a presentation or anything. Um, and I'm assuming we would have a presentation at some point before we took action. Um, my, the question that came first to mind is dealing with different jurisdictional boundaries. Um, you know, a school bus might be running in Montgomery County in Blacksburg. How do we, how does this deal with that?
Sheriff Parton can probably address that.
And, and I'll just mention real briefly before the sheriff talks is, um, all this ordinance is doing is allowing, the, the state law says that, that they can put these cameras on the buses, but the local governing body has to authorize it. I'm not sure why it was set up that way. It just was. So the purpose of this ordinance is just to allow them to do it. And, and, and so the, this is a civil penalty, not a criminal penalty. And so any, any school bus in Montgomery County that records somebody going through when the arms are open would be in violation and so.
I would be interested to hear from you as well, Sheriff.
So the state code section forty-six-two, eight forty-four allows for law enforcement to take action on that violation as deputies in the county, jurisdiction, all over the county.
Okay.
And I've already spoken to both chiefs to make sure they were okay with that and they were all on board. And to make you feel even better, just a couple of facts I pulled up today. Twenty, twenty-five states already have legislation for this. About thirteen, fourteen of them are already enforcing it with cameras. Um, Chesapeake City has six hundred school buses. They have every one of them outfitted with these cameras. Falls Church, Arlington, Newport News, Fairfax, Loudoun County, they're all over the place. And as far as safety goes and the kids, you can't beat it.
Agreed. Um, and I appreciate both of the answers that I got because that was my concern is if it's on a school bus and it's, you know, say out Price's Fork, who's?
So I, I'm, I'm sorry.
No, but it's not a violation of our ordinance. It's a violation of state law, forty-six point two. Our ordinance just lets the schools do it.
Okay. Thank you.
I also need to throw some bones out to the school superintendent. Without Dr. Bragan, this could have never happened because unlike the other program we're initiating, the speed zone cameras, that's between me and the vendor. Uh, the code section also says, not this one, but a different code section says that this process has to happen between the vendor and the school superintendent. But the program cannot happen without law enforcement being involved, just like the other program. So, uh, Dr. Bragan was on board with this from the very first phone call.
I think it's great, uh, the amount of work that you've put in to, um, both programs. And I think the fact that we're looking at having coexisting programs speaks to, um, how this board and your office values the safety of the children in the school zones. So great. I, I look forward to the public, uh, comment on it for sure.
The ordinance is very important so that we can get the ball rolling and, and hopefully roll these programs out in the fall.
Nice. Thank you both.
Thank you.
Okay. Yes, Supervisor Bone?
How often does this happen in our county?
A lot.
So statistically, the accident rate nationally from unloading and loading children is low. But when the accidents happen, they're almost always tragic. And the other problem with that is there is a huge lack of awareness of the code section and the law on the part of everyday drivers. They don't know when they have to stop for school buses. And if it's a four-lane highway, it's bad. So anybody that's listening, if there's a physical barrier or a median and you're traveling the opposite direction, you do not have to stop. That is the only time you do not have to stop. If you're behind, you gotta stop. If there's no barrier, no median, you gotta stop. So.
But if it's a.
Don't get mad at us when you get the summons.
If it's a BT bus, you can pass it. Yeah. Right.
I am talking about the yellow bus with all the lights.
I know you are. Thank you.
Uh, is there anyone else that would like to make a comment or a question, has a question for the sheriff? Um, I can just tell you that one former supervisor, Dale Shepherd, is very happy.
I'm sure he is.
He's been waiting for this for a long time. And so when I texted him today about it, he was excited.
Many school bus drivers are excited about this.
Yeah, good. All right. Well, with that being said, are we ready to call the roll?
Have they got the money for all this?
Yeah. Yeah.
Do you know how that's gonna work? Who's gonna pay for the cameras? Maybe, I don't know the answer to that. Is it the, will the vendor pay?
There is no upfront cost to either one of these programs. Either the safety zone at the schools or the stop farm.
Or like a revenue share?
We can find out more information.
That is yet to be determined, but that money will probably, that money is, is set and it's handled in other jurisdictions to the sheriff's office.
I meant a revenue share between your office and the company that, uh, puts the cameras on.
And, and obviously that's, that's where they make their bucks.
Yeah.
So.
Okay. Think we're ready?
Ms. Bone?
Aye.
Mr. Kits?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Fidzikowski?
Aye.
Ms. Demots?
Aye.
Mr. Gravsky?
Aye.
Chair Biggs?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
All right. And that leads us to our next item is a resolution for Men's Health Week. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Want to keep our males healthy, okay? Roll call.
Mr. Kits?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Fidzikowski?
Aye.
Ms. Demots?
Aye.
Mr. Gravsky?
Aye.
Ms. Bone?
Aye.
Chair Biggs?
Aye.
Seven ayes. Okay, time for reports. County attorney?
I just have one comment. I think we need more than a week. I think we need a month, men, men's health month, but, um, other than that, I have no other comment. Thanks.
Okay, okay. Um, Ms. Hill, county administrator?
I have one exciting announcement I shared with Supervisor King earlier, um, earlier this evening. The contract for the Auburn Park was signed by everyone. So, um, I think that Scott Woodrum's working with the rest of the folks to get a pre, pre-construction meeting set up hopefully about, mm, eleven o'clock this evening so they can start tomorrow with the shovel.
And Scott will be out there tonight with his shovel.
We will keep you posted. Um, I think the pre-construction meeting will happen probably by the end of next week, I believe. We're trying to get it on Monday.
Anything else though?
That's all.
Okay, well, let's just go to Supervisor King then next.
Nah, I do appreciate everybody working on this. I don't have no report, but I know it's been a long time coming, but it's gonna be nice when it gets there.
Yeah, it will. Okay, Supervisor Kits?
Uh, I had a chance to go through the library board meeting last week and, uh, met the librarian from the Meadowbrook Library, Cindy. Uh, she is getting ready to retire. She's extremely happy and thankful for the retirement benefit package. I told her, said you need to thank April when you see her. But forty-two years to Cindy, forty-two, thirty-eight full-time as a librarian, and she is retiring and she will be missed. So I just wanted to give her a shout out real quick. So that's all I have.
She is responsible for a lot of really neat programs down there.
She's got the food fridge down there. They do backpacks for children. They do meals twice a week. I mean, it's, it's impressive what she's doing.
Yeah. Okay. All right, Supervisor Bone?
No report.
Okay. Um, Supervisor Demots?
Took a drink at the wrong time. No report.
Okay, and Supervisor Gravsky?
Uh, I'll just say, I, I, we had the opportunity last week to volunteer at one of our children's school for field day last Monday. And, um, out at Price's Fork Elementary School, I can say there's a lot of happy faculty and staff, uh, you know, based on some of the actions of this board. And so they're, they're just real appreciative of, of everything that we're doing and wanted to pass that along.
Oh, thank you. That's good to know. Okay, the only thing I have is just a reminder that, you know, tomorrow is the ACE program at New River Community. Oh, I'm sorry. Vice Chair, did I miss you? All right, Vice Chair Fidzikowski, what would you like to?
I originally had no report, but now I have something to talk about.
All right.
I'm abused up here, but no, I don't have any report. And I'm okay with it. If you can pass me by.
Okay, I'm just gonna remind you by the ACE program, a decade of opportunity is going to be held tomorrow at, uh, New River Community College in Edwards Hall. The doors open at six-thirty and the PBS premier, you know, public television is at seven. So, um, anyone that wants to go, you know, make sure you register. That's a great program that we all support. And that's all I have. So anybody else have anything for the cause? All right, we are adjourned.